Good evening. We'll start the meeting with the Lord's Prayer. Today, as this session opens, we pray for your presence to be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for the direction in which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted this day of wisdom to make decisions for which will be good for the city. We also pray for your special blessing and those who are working to transform our city to make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Roll call.
Counselor Samaras.
Yeah.
Counselor Chow.
Yeah.
Counselor Conway.
Yeah.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Yeah.
Counselor Elliott.
Yeah.
Mayor Lahey.
Yeah.
Counselor Mercier.
Yeah.
Counselor New.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Memorials, Counselor Chow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to request a moment of silence in Docking Chamber for the father of Kimberly Duggan Scott, a former Lowell School committee member. Charles Duggan, formerly known as Charlie to his family and friends, aged 74 at Tewksbury, formerly of Wilmington, passed away peacefully at home surrounded by his loving family on April 15, 2021. Charlie was born on October 18, 1946, at home in Wilmington, Massachusetts. He was the dear son of the late John, Mike, and Margaret Duggan and the youngest of fourteen siblings. Charlie was raised and educated in Wilmington and learned to be a hard worker from a young age. This was a trait that carried him throughout his life. Charlie started his long career in construction working concrete forms. After several years, Charlie broke out on his own and started Charles Duggan Concrete Forms Company. Charlie's work ethics, along with his outgoing personality, made him quite successful throughout the years. He proudly pointed out homes in the area that he had completed foundations on. Charlie married his sweetheart Susan Morris on September 7, 1968. The couple settled in Tewksbury where they raised two wonderful daughters. Charlie was very dedicated to his family, the love of his life, daughters dearly, but really cherished his role as pappy to his three grandchildren. Charlie and Susan, along with their family, shared many great times together. Family holidays and road trips were always a lot of fun. Charlie's family was most important in his life. They were truly his legacy, and he was so proud of them. Charlie was a man of many talents. He was an avid gardener with an unbelievable green thumb, who created beautiful flower gardens throughout his yard, an excellent woodworker, and he could fix any small engine that was put in front of him. Charlie had an array of snow blowers and lawn mowers of all makes and models in his yard that he was either fixing for a friend or a neighbor or fixing and selling. Charlie was known to be a tinkerer around the house and yard. He loved to challenge himself and could fix just about anything. Charlie was the beloved husband of 52 years to Susan J. Duggan Morris, devoted father of Karen Rizzuti and her husband Joe of Tewksbury, and Kim Scott and her husband Paul of Lowell, loving pappy of Aaron Scott, Madison Scott, and Phoenix Rizzuti. Charlie was a wonderful family man who loved his family and friends with all his heart, and he will forever be missed by all who knew and loved him. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Conway, did you have one?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence in Docking Chambers for Jean Chisholm. Jean Brodeur Chisholm Dankos, 89, a lifelong Lowell resident, passed away peacefully at a home after a brief illness Thursday, April 5, 2021, surrounded by a loving family. She was the beloved wife of Phil Dankos, with whom she celebrated 28 years of marriage this past February. A daughter of the late Joseph and the late Mary Ellen Brodeur, she was born November 25, 1931, in Lowell and was educated in Lowell Schools and graduated from Lowell High School. She made a lifelong home in the Belvedere section of the city and was a communicant of the Maccla Conception Church. She worked at Raytheon Corporation for almost 40 years before her retirement. Prior to that, she worked for the former St. John's Hospital. She enjoyed traveling, time in the kitchen, reading, gardening, knitting, amongst many other hobbies. Brodeur was always open, and she was welcome to everyone with open arms. She could always, excuse me, she could always count on leaving home feeling that you truly had a part of her, were part of her family. Her smile could light up a room. Family was her center. Spending time with the family, especially her grandchildren, great-grandchildren, brought her great joy. She was also an animal lover and is survived by one of her favorite grand dogs, Clarence. Besides, besides a living, a loving husband, Philip, she is survived by her children Donna Lambert of Lowell, Jean Cafeterio of Drakett, and Patricia Dankos, and Karen Casella, and her husband William of Lowell, and Daniel Dankos of Palham, New Hampshire. Her eight grandchildren and also eight grand, great-grandchildren. She is also survived by her sister Evelyn Silver of Groton and her sister-in-law Barbara Brodeur of New Hampshire, her many nieces, nephews, and close friends, including her dear friend Helen Androch of New Hampshire. She was also predeceased by her late husband, Thomas Chisholm, who passed away in 1990, as well as her brothers Joseph Brodeur and his wife Agnes Ernest Brodeur and his wife Mary Edward Brodeur, sister Lorraine Russell, and her family Frank and Dorothy Renaud, and her brother-in-law, the late Arthur Silva. The family would like to thank Hobbit Side Hospice for all the care and compassion they showed to Jean over her final months. Jean Chisholm Dankos will be missed by many friends and family. May her soul rest in peace. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence in Docking Chamber for Michelle Mary Mickey Brady. Born in Lowell, raised and educated in Lowell, and then attended Newbury College, attaining an associate's degree in accounting. Mary worked for the city of Lowell for over 30 years, for many years with the Department of Public Works, and retired as the office manager. She worked for the DPW up until February of this year. Mary was well-respected and loved very much for her patience, kindness, and friendship. Besides her father, Richard, her survivors include her daughter Amy Silver, her beloved great, her beloved granddaughter Sophia Silver, and many relatives and friends. She was very young when she passed on. We offer our deepest sympathy to her family, relatives, and many friends. I want to make note of the dedication and respect displayed by the Lowell Police Department. The family thanks each and every one of those police officers very much. I'd also like to offer a moment of silence in Docking Chamber for Richard M. Pelletier. Richard grew up in Lowell and was a graduate of Lowell High School. He went on to honorably serve his country in the United States Marines. Prior to his retirement last year, Rick worked, also worked for the city of Lowell in the Department of Public Works, Land and Buildings Division, for over 20-plus years. Rick is survived by his loving companion Teresa Kukias, his three children Shane, Shannon, and Kristen. He was the husband of the late Sandra Pelletier and grandfather of the late Stephen Pelletier. We offer our condolences to his family, relatives, and many friends. Let us also offer a moment of silence in Docking Chamber to all those who have passed on since our last council meeting. May they all rest in peace. Thank you.
Counselor Samaras, did you have one? All right. I just have one quick one from up here.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure, Mr. Rourke.
Counselor, thanks. Docking Chambers, a moment of silence for MJ Rourke, 35 years old, lifelong resident of the Pawtucketville section of Lowell. She passed away Monday, April 19, surrounded by her family. MJ was born in Lowell on May 7, 1985, daughter of the late Stephen L. Rourke Jr. and Mary Joan Rourke. MJ was currently employed by Crest Collaborative in Anova as an IT tech. She was a graduate of Lowell High School, where she was a four-year member of the field hockey team. She also played PYO basketball and softball coached by her dad, Steve. MJ was an excellent cook and hoped to someday own her own restaurant. What was most important to MJ was the time spent with her daughter Olivia and her extensive family. In addition to her mother, she leaves her beloved daughter Olivia Rourke, two siblings, Megan Rourke and her fiancee Pat Sheehy, and William Rourke and his wife Erin, a niece, Emma Rose, her godmother Karen Golden, several aunts, uncles, and cousins. Next, Mr. Mayor, a moment of silence in Docking Chambers for Stephen Rourke, 67, a resident of the Pawtucketville section of Lowell, who passed away this past Sunday, again surrounded by his loving family. He was a beloved husband of Mary Joan Rourke, with whom he would have celebrated his 40th wedding anniversary on this September 19. Steve was born in Lowell on October 30, 1953, the son of the late Stephen Rourke Sr. and Lilian T. Cox Rourke. Stephen was a graduate of Lowell High School in class of 1971. Following Lowell High, he served with the United States Air Force during the Vietnam War and was honorably discharged in 1975. Prior to his retirement in 2018, he was employed by MIT Haystack Observatory in Westfield and played with the company Golf League for many years. He was also a former softball player with the 1486 Lounge Softball Team. Steve also enjoyed coaching his children in basketball and softball for the PYO youth leagues. He's a longtime member and former bartender at the Eastern Club in Centerville. He's also a member of the St. Rita Parish in Lowell. In addition to his wife, he leaves two children, Megan Rourke and, again, her fiancee, Pat Sheehy, and William Rourke and his wife Erin, two grandchildren, Olivia Lilian and Emma Rose Sheehy, a sister, Mary Elizabeth Rourke, three sisters-in-law, Claire Rourke, Barbara Lacan, and Brenda Williams, and her husband Brian, several nieces, nephews, and cousins. Steve was the father of the late MJ Rourke, who I just spoke of, the brother of the late Andrew Rourke, and Eileen Rourke Golden and her husband, Thomas A. Golden Sr. For both, Mr. Mayor, relatives and friends are invited to Steve's life celebration along with MJ on Friday from 3:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the McKenna Olef funeral home on Hildreth Street. And obviously, due to health concerns, socially distancing and masks are required. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. I'd just like to offer a moment of silence for N'gor L'N'Sant, loving son, brother, nephew, and uncle, and friend. N'gor passed away at age 44 unexpectedly on March 28 at his home away from home in Stamford Springs, Connecticut. N'gor was born in Laos on August 6, 1977. As a young boy, he and his family came to the United States in October of 1980, settled in Lowell. N'gor was educated in Lowell Schools, standout track star at the Daly Middle School. He went on for a successful, as a successful student at the Middlesex Academy China School. He furthered his education at Middlesex Community College and ITT Technical Institute. He still has many relatives here in the city, and he will be deeply missed. Thank you. Under Mayor's business, communication, remote, and Zoom participation, motion to accept the place on fire by Counselor Chow, second by Counselor Conway. Under Mayor's business, we wanted to congratulate Daniel LaRocque on his retirement. And Counselor Chow, you had a couple of words to say?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was gonna read this during the announcement, but since you brought it up, I would like to read this recognition right now, if you don't mind. I wish to take a moment to recognize and thank Deputy Superintendent Daniel LaRocque, who is retiring, or who retired last week after 37 years as a member of the Lowell Police Department. Dan LaRocque is a great asset to the city and a highly regarded member of the Police Department. His work ethics and high standards are hallmarks of his career. He has been a true behind-the-scenes mentor to many of his brothers and sisters, officers over the years. Dan worked his way up through the ranks, leading some of the most complex and dangerous assignments, including the gang unit, narcotics investigations, and homicides. He continually improved his skills and depth of the department with his advanced law enforcement degrees and his training with the FBI. He brings great pride to the city, the Police Department, his family, and to the legacy of his deceased father, Lowell Police Captain Jack LaRocque, who was recognized in special citations and recognitions by Citizens Group in both Pawtucketville and Centralville. Dan has been a leader under the department implementing community policing with former Superintendent Ed Davis, and most recently assisting Superintendent Kelly Richardson in the accreditation of the Lowell Police Department, which is an enormously proud and important accomplishment. We salute Deputy LaRocque and sincerely thank him and his family for all his years and service to the citizens of Lowell. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations to Assistant Superintendent LaRocque. Next, we have guests in the chambers, so I'd like to take, make a motion to take, suspend the rules to take something out of order by Counselor Elliott, second by Counselor Conway. Want to take informational reports, acre crossing presentation. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the council. We do have on the agenda tonight a presentation on a new and exciting project in the acre entitled Acre Crossing. The gentlemen are here tonight to make this presentation, and they have, I've met with them, I've seen the project, I think it's an exciting one, of great importance for the acre. They aren't asking for anything from the council, but as a courtesy, because this is a project that they intend to move forward on in the very near future, they are coming here to give the council a preview of coming attractions. So with your permission, we have here Mark Cochran from Jean Dar Credit Union, who is the president of the credit union. Also is, here is Will Soucy, who will be involved in the project and the developer. And we also have John Chemley from the Board of Jean Dar Credit Union. So I'll turn it over to our guests, Mr. Mayor, to make the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to thank the manager for allowing us to speak here tonight. Mr. Mayor, I want to thank you as well, and I'd like to thank the entire City Council for listening to our project tonight. We are very excited, especially as the chairman of the board, we are very excited to offer you a first look at what is going to be a revitalization of that area of the acre within the next year and a half to two years. Many years ago, we had, Mr. Speck came in and did traffic studies, and he did city studies, and he did all kinds of stuff to talk to us about...
Just press the button on the microphone. There, button on there.
I got it. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, there.
Has to be green, okay. Many years ago, we had several studies done by Mr. Speck, who was hired by several city managers to talk to us about future success and future plans for our city. Three major points that I remember from his, his study was, what makes a successful city? What makes people attracted to our city? The three things I really remember are cranes in the sky, sidewalk traffic after 6:00 p.m., and above-street-level occupancy. In other words, whether it be commercial, whether it be residential, second- and third-floor occupancy to fill buildings. The project we're about to present tonight is an exciting one in that it handles all three of these, of these statutes, and it's going to be wonderful for this, this part of town. We have tonight with us, Mark Cochran is our CEO, Will Soucy is a developer, and this is a 30 or so-plus condominium unit. It is also a commercial building that's going to offer many jobs down at this end of the city, and it's also going to offer, I noticed we were talking earlier about maybe some, some parking studies, well, we're also offering a two-level parking garage as well for that area. So I would like to introduce Mark Cochran as a CEO, and he's going to go through the presentation tonight, and any questions, certainly, you may ask us. Thank you.
John, thank you. And so I'm told there's new technology, so I'll just say that. So hopefully, all of you can see what I'm presenting. I'm also going to introduce, Will, do you want to come on this side and kind of manage the thing? Will is the developer, and we're working together to build this project. So I thought Will would describe what he's building, and then I would add at the end why we're doing it and what I see the value to both the credit union, the neighborhood, and, and the members of our credit union, and the people that live in the city of Lowell. So more to come on that. Turn it over to Will.
Okay. Good evening. Thank you for taking us. Here's the first one. You're looking at, you're at the corner of Merrimack Street and Cabot Street, looking up Cabot. The building way over to the left-hand side is the commercial building, which would be the, for the credit union. That's a 30,000-square-foot building. The rest of it towards the right-hand side are 32 units, five stories. This one here is mostly the credit union. You can see on the lower right-hand, excuse me, the lower left-hand corner, where the cars would enter, going in underneath what John mentioned, with two-level parking. The bottom portion will be mostly for the credit union, and the upper portion would be for the residents.
I'll just pause there, and we'll go back and forth. So there's going to be 160 spaces, which more than meets all the code requirements. And you'll see in the next building, or the next picture that Will's going to show, that although it's a two-level garage, the top level is street level. And so the first level is actually underground. So it's not going to look like a parking garage at all. It's going to look like surface parking. But the parking needs of our building, the condominium units, and, and everything related to the retail can all be housed on our property. We don't need street parking or anything else.
Yep, this, excuse me, this bill, this picture is from Market Street, the elevation. You can see just on the lower right-hand corner, you can see just an element of the parking level exposed. The difference between the, between Merrimack Street and Cabot Street is six foot in elevation, so it's going to be easy enough to, to make this work. So it's not gonna, you know, we have all the green space up in front, these trees, you see, it's, I think it looks pretty good. And now this one here is straight on from Merrimack Street. We have a small building between the credit union and the condos, just a small retail space. And the next one is Fox.
So I know we went through that quickly, and of course, if there's any questions, but let me just highlight again, it's actually two buildings. So it's the credit union building, a connection on the first level of a retail space, and then there's the condominium building. The first floor of the condominium will be retail. So there's 4,700 square feet of retail, and there's 32 units, five-story buildings above that. The important thing about the condos is just that, that they're condos. So this isn't low-income housing. This is the next level of taking people that we can create affordable programs so they can start homeownership. These will typically be first-time homebuyers. The credit union, along with other organizations, are going to be presenting special financing and special ways for them to be able to qualify. So there'll be 32 two- and three-bedroom condominium units. So I heard some of the discussion earlier from the neighborhoods, and I realized that there needs to be... and I realized that there needs to be a progression out of low-income housing into the next step of ownership. I view this as that next step of ownership that we can take. And so we're excited about that, as we saw at the end in terms of next steps. Of course, we have zoning and planning board, but this last piece, applying for state and local funding sources. There's programs out there, the city manager's been very helpful, along with her staff, in helping us identify those. And those programs will help us be able to subsidize some of the costs, which will allow us to keep the prices lower and make it affordable for people to live there. So our intention, just to back up a little bit about the credit union for those that don't know, we're a hundred and nine years old, started in the acre. We've been in the acre our whole life. We built Tremont Yard together. Believe it or not, that was twelve years ago, 2009. We built the branch on Merrimack Street together, again, this is Will. That was in 2014. This is our next project in the acre, and we think it's more than just the credit union. We really think it's a great addition for the whole neighborhood. So I'll pause at that. That's really our presentation, but we're excited. We'd love to take any questions that you might have.
Counselor Rourke? Oh, I don't, yeah, no. Any questions? Counselor Samaras?
Thank you. And I want to thank you for the presentation that you made. But I'll tell you why I think it's so important, what you're doing today. A number of years ago, I was concerned about this corridor. I made a motion about this corridor, about the issues about the acre, about this point from the city hall to the university, one of the poorest sections in the city. And as a result of that, we get the Working Cities Challenge Grant. And that was from the Federal Reserve System. But the importance of that grant was, the purpose was to go into the neighborhoods, or the neighborhood, and listen, to work and talk with the people as to what they need. And I have to say, the one thing is, that grant was successful because Jeanne d'Arc totally supported that grant. I can remember a number of times you put on programs in your office, supplied refreshments for the neighborhood people to come in under a fine atmosphere to be able to express their concerns. And their concerns were jobs, better living conditions, and really a more positive environment for this area. And you've truly met all of the needs, so thank you for what you're doing. I'm very proud to be, to be able to be here tonight and see this. Thank you for what you've done.
Thank you, Counselor Samaras.
Counselor Elliott?
Yeah, I concur with Counselor Samaras. I, I remember supporting that, you know, the Working City Challenge and the reports and the recommendations that came out. We did just have a zoning subcommittee meeting, and many of the issues that we discussed are addressed in here. I can remember the prior proposal that came forward for dormitory space that the university did not need at that point, and it was very, very densely populated. There was not enough parking in an area where there's no parking to begin with. So I appreciate the fact that you exceeded the zoning requirements for parking. I think that's important. And I think we're going to hear more of that when we do get the results of the parking study. They're affordable. These are thirty-two units of affordable housing. I mean, I personally feel that this is a pathway to homeownership that I, I do think is, is important as, as we did discuss earlier about equity and inclusion and affordability. And I think that's, I do think it's, I think it's an important element. So thank you to the Jeanne d'Arc Credit Union, Soucy Industries, for taking pieces of property in a section of the city that needs much attention, both commercial, industrial, and as Mr. Chemley said, sidewalk traffic. I mean, that's, that's what we want to continue to grow the downtown, and particularly in a corridor that was once Little Canada, was once one of the most thriving sections of the city, with St. Joseph's High School and the, and the Function Hall. And throughout the course of the decade, it has, you know, people migrated out, and it needs some, some attention. So I think this is, this is exciting and a significant improvement from the prior proposal that will advance affordable housing, address the parking, and provide, not that this is the driving force, but some significant tax revenue into the city. So seems like it's a win-win all the way around, so.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Chow, and then Counselor Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I want to reiterate the previous counselor's commendation on your, on your presentation. And thank you all for coming to make the presentation person. You didn't have to, my only complaint was that the presentation was too short. I get excited to hear some development like this, to really take care of that particular community. And as Counselor Rodney Elliott mentioned, we had, we just had a very important meeting prior to this about neighborhood development, about housing supplies and affordable housings. This is really needed in the community, and I'm just very excited that you're pulling this forward to help the citizens of Lowell. Thank you.
Counselor Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Gentlemen, I want to thank you very much for the presentation. Incredible job, and, and certainly a great project. And I think it's, needless to say, what an incredible asset to the city of Lowell, and in particular, that, that, that area. So it brings jobs, housing, great opportunities. And with all this, you've solved the parking problem too. And that's something that we often talk about with projects. And again, it, it certainly is well thought out, and we thank you very much for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Noon, then Counselor Mercy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a very, very good project. I remember back, I think it's two years ago, there's another project. But it's nowhere near this project in term of addressing a lot of things that this council and I'm sure the zoning and the planning board were looking for. It's a great project in term of addressing all the packing needed, and having downstairs, down there is being commercial. I don't know what type of commercial it's going to be. I'm sure it's going to be beautiful. So I know that this city and this council are here to assist and support, particularly developers such as you, to develop housings that are combined of affordable and market-rate housing. I noticed that here that you indicated through the two, affordable for sale. Certainly, the area of Merrimack Street, the acre areas, need improvement. And I'm sure with you taking lead in it, I'm sure the other property owners and developers has come in and want to do the same. It's also a gateway too, between the connection between the university and the city. And this is an important point, because it certainly is going to help in term of foot traffic and whatnot. So I'm sure manager would say that, anything that this council or that the city can do to help assist you in term of going for zoning, planning, and/or applying for state funding. So congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Mercy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to take this opportunity to thank all of you for coming up here and sharing your vision, your reality with us, because this is a great project. And I know it's going to succeed, because you have a reputation of delivering. And, and so you come well-prepared, and we know your product. So I'm very, very happy about this. This was my neighborhood growing up, going to St. Patrick's School every day. So I do know the area and the improvement that's going to be made, the parking off the street. It fits everything that we've discussed earlier, the parking, the ownership, and the housing. So, and retail on the bottom, I mean, businesses, I mean, what more could we ask for tonight? So there's your solution to what we talked about earlier. Thank you very much. Congratulations. I'm with you a hundred percent. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Counselor Rourke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, Mark, I'm sure you walked in saying you didn't think you'd solve Lowell's housing problem, right? But, you know, congratulations. But, you know, again, it's a great project, and I think more importantly, you kept it in the acre, right, where, you know, many families began, where you guys began. So obviously, you have the support of, of the council, myself, and the manager. But thanks for coming forward and bringing it, and staying in the city. Thank you.
Counselor, drink water?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I just want to chime in. This looks like a, a great project. And, you know, I really think it's great because- Something funny here. Anyway, what we related to is the, the increasing cost of rental units in the city. And oftentimes, what we see is that residents, if they could come up with the financing to own, they would be paying just about the, the same thing in a mortgage as they would be paying for their, their monthly rent. So you mentioned coming up with programs to help people transition into potentially buying their first home, which I really think if we can help them get to the point to, to get their financing together, to be able to, to afford their own place, they're going to be, see incredible financial benefits in terms of, you know, building equity in a home for about the same cost as they would be putting into, into rent. So this really does seem to hit a niche that's, that's needed. And I'm very interested in finding out more about, you know, the, the cost and the affordability of the units, and also the programs that you mentioned to, to help residents, you know, be able to, to reach that first-time homebuyer status. So thank you very much for the presentation, and it looks like a great project.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Anything else, Madam Manager?
No, thank you. Just that, as we, we've discussed, we'll support their, the, the project's applications. There are some, some products that the state has that we feel very strongly. This project fits perfectly within, and, and it, especially because it's not just the, the housing side and the homeownership side, that there's some great opportunities there with some state funding, but also infrastructure. Because jobs, you know, imagine a company a hundred and nine years old is growing in the acre, never left the acre, but there will be job creation. And so, you know, we're going to explore, from the city's perspective, the opportunity to improve infrastructure around that neighborhood. There's some, you know, very old utilities and roadways. And so there's, there's some programs that we think this suits, you know, perfectly what the state has to offer. So we're, we're going to aggressively pursue that for this neighborhood as well.
Thank you, gentlemen. Great presentation, and we look forward to the project.
Thank you. We just want to thank all of you for your time and for your enthusiasm and your insights. And I also want a special shout-out to the city manager who helped us get to this point by introducing some of those programs and helping us to understand how this might all work together. So we're excited. Nobody asked a question, but if everything goes well, I'm speaking for Will a little bit. We're hoping to break ground in the fall and get going. So early 2023 is the hope, so we'll see what happens. Thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll stay under suspension, and after the public hearing, we'll get to the Colley Memorial Stadium update, because we have guests here. But being after seven o'clock, we have to do public hearing. So National Grid requests reconstruction of gas pressure regulations. Oh, five, okay, yeah. Five-point-one, the order of portion, abandoned portion of Canal Street. Open up the hearing to all those in favor. In favor? In favor? That portion is closed. Open it up to anybody in opposition. Opposition? Opposition, that portion is closed. Need a motion to adopt and refer to clerk's office for seven days. So need a motion by Counselor Mercy, seconded by Counselor Rourke. Roll call? Do a roll call when it comes back up. National Grid requests reconstruction of gas pressure regulation station at SCADA system at the intersection of Highland Street and Thorne Dyke Street. Open it up to all, anyone, to all those in favor? There's a person from National Grid here. Sean Wood?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, yes. We are requesting to add a SCADA point telemetry box here at the existing pit we are currently replacing.
Okay, is that all set?
He muted himself.
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
There you go. Now you, now you're good.
I apologize for that.
Yeah.
Yes, we are requesting access or allowing you, allowing us to add-
Did he mute again? All right. Are you all set, Sean?
I, I'm sorry. I think I'm having audio problems. Basically, we're asking, we're asking to add a telescada box to this location.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Anyone else in favor? In favor, that portion is closed. Open up to anybody in opposition. Opposition? That portion is closed. Need a motion to refer the wire inspector for a report and recommendation by Counselor Elliott, seconded by Counselor Chow. All right. So now we'll go back to-
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to suspend the rules.
I stayed under them now.
Okay.
Is it okay to stay under them?
Yeah.
So now we'll go to G Information, the Colley, Colley Memorial Stadium update. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the council. We have provided a, a report regarding the Colley Stadium complex. And just to review the, the more recent history on this project, the council, I know, will recall, I think it was about two years ago, that we had been notified, first, I think, by the athletic director from Lowell High School, and then others, that the state of the turf out at Colley Complex was in very, very poor condition. We, Planning and Development, and we brought in a consultant to examine the turf. And they concluded that, and this was last year, that it really should not be used for play. It was dangerous and could cause injuries to the players out there. And as, as I know the council knows, this, this particular stadium gets a lot of use. And so through the support of the council, last summer, we installed the turf at Colley Stadium. This was something that was funded a hundred percent by the city, over $562,000 to install state-of-the-art turf. Mr. Baldwin looked and found the funding to get it done. We just didn't have the luxury of trying to wait for another year or other years, given that we were being told not to use it. At the same time, we were told by our consultants last summer that though the track needed to be fixed out there, that we should wait until this year to do that work, partly because it was their opinion we would get a better, more competitive pricing if we were to wait. And so that project was bid. And I know we've, there's been requests since 2019 and so forth about updating the council. And so this is bringing you up to date as to what's been happening out at Colley Stadium. And so the, we, we did get a bid. The bid was awarded. We anticipate that this project, we couldn't do it in the spring because the schedule of the high school using the track out there is, is currently being used. In fact, football was played in the, in the spring, and what we would have probably thought was winter. But they did, and they did successfully, you know, use that. And the, the design and installation of the new track and project is about a hundred, approximately $150,000. And again, we're using capital funds to have that done. Again, all city funds and our commitment to this project. Around that same time of about a year or so ago, Counselor Samaras and Counselor Rourke had, had met with me and people in Planning and Development and expressed that there was an interest in private entities, individuals, who wanted to improve the locker rooms specifically out at the stadium. They wanted to raise money and to contribute in a public-private partnership sort of manner to, to improve the locker rooms. And, and I know the council had seen- And I know the council had seen pictures of the condition, not just of the stadium, but the locker rooms, especially the boys' locker rooms, that are in very, very poor condition. So there were discussions around that, and there was individuals who were interested in somehow supporting that effort. But the city, the city engineer, staff, Planning and Development inspected the stadium out there, especially the grandstand, and determined that at this point, it would not be advisable to accept money to fix those locker rooms until we find out what is wrong with, what needs to be done. There's a crack in the, in the, in the grandstand. And so on April 1st, we issued an RFQ to hire a consultant to do an assessment of this grandstand. We've received several responses to our RFQ, and we're anticipating that the consultant will not only identify what are the critical issues around the grandstand, but it will also help us address what needs to be done and how it needs to be done, and give us a roadmap to prioritize, you know, other needs in that. In the connection with the discussions with, there was a private nonprofit organization that formed, the Lowell Athletic Activities Foundation, and I know they're represented here tonight. And Planning and Development has worked, not just on assessing the grandstand and trying to come up with a strategy for what should come first, but also in, you know, in response in part to this desire to have private funds be donated to the city. Other discussions ensued, including the presentation from the group of what about other, what could be at Colley Stadium, a vision for Colley Stadium, a field house. Now, you know, certainly it's not in the city's budget at this point in time to build a field house. And even the improvements to the locker room sorely needed, and any, any monies that in their kindness would like to raise and donate would be greatly accepted, of course. But the idea, this idea of the public-private partnership, the idea that there's, there's an interest and an effort on a local level to privately fundraise, to try and leverage whatever the city has or whatever kind of grants the city may be able to apply for out there. And, and so that's the nature of the report tonight. Where have we been? How did we start with this visioning? And, and the vision, again, I need to stress, because I know sometimes people look at and say, well, how come they're building a big field house and they haven't, that's not what we're proposing, but it's, it's imagine, what can happen? What could, what, what could be the state-of-the-art out there? So again, I want to credit Counselors Samaras and Rourke for bringing this idea forward and the group forward. And so what we do have is a vision plan, what part of where we've been. And I don't know if anyone wants to speak first, but Camilo Espatia is able to kind of go quickly through the plan, if, if that's the wish of the, the council. Just going through what the challenges are out there and what could possibly be envisioned. So...
Counsel Rourke, do you want them to go first?
No.
All right. If somebody wants to come up and speak, do you...
The plan, the presentation?
Is Camilo ready to go right now?
Yeah, Camilo is, he should be on...
Hello, everyone. Can you guys see the screen?
We can.
Thank you. Yeah, this is a rather extensive PDF, but I can go quickly through all the images and what this is about. Basically, as the manager mentioned before, this is sort of a master plan for Colley Stadium and the entire complex, so that we can have a vision of what it could be in the future, but more importantly, to be strategic about how we invest in it. And we did this because there are several areas in the entire complex that could be better served with improvements all throughout the facility, and because there seems to be, as was mentioned before, a desire from nonprofit organizations to maybe contribute to the vision. And we thought that this document could help illustrate what that vision is to achieve a state-of-the-art facility for the city. And it includes repairs to the grandstand, some cleaning, upgrading, relocation of storage, the renovation of the locker rooms, bathrooms, sidewalk repairs and access, landscaping, and the way we look at the fences. And so started creating a series of images that can address that and that can be tackled as funding becomes available, and that show what those opportunities are to improve the facility. And so some of the images here are just illustrations that help us visualize what those fixes should be. They're not really necessarily a final design decisions, but again, just ways to envision what that future could be. And so, for instance, the very first thing is the repairs of the grandstand and to make sure it is up to code, that it is usable, that doesn't have water issues, and that is obviously structurally sound. And we have, again, an RFP, an RFQ already out there, we're reviewing the responses to make sure that we get what that assessment is and what the next steps would be to make sure we upgrade the grandstand. But it's also about suggesting basically the replacement of some of the fencing that is currently on site, cleaning, repainting crosswalks and parking areas to make sure that people know where to walk and park and drive so that it is safer for everyone. We're looking at upgrading some of the current landscaping to make it more inviting, using signage as well to guide people throughout the entire complex. There's also the idea of a field house that could have study areas, exercise rooms, mini rooms, and offices, and of course, the upgrade of the locker rooms, looking for ways to add weight finding and branding for the complex. And finally, the idea of a relocation of the bus stop to make sure we have a better connection to the complex from the entire city. And so the idea that we have is that we have a series of projects that as funding becomes available, we can then know where the priorities are and where it makes sense to use those funds. And so ideally, we have a list of projects that are estimated in their costs in a way where we can basically have a checklist without each item being interdependent, again, except for maybe the grandstand assessment, which is something that needs to be done prior to doing any repairs inside. But a list of projects that is basically a way to have a tangible way of thinking what type of things we should repair and upgrade in the complex. So as part of how that list came to be and what has been done as part of the entire complex, I let Giovanni elaborate a little bit on this and give us a little bit of past on this.
Great, thanks, Camilo. You know, as the manager had said, the city funded, fully funded the turf repairs last year. That was done in lightning speed. Everyone recognized the importance of having that project done quickly. And we were able to get that project done very quickly within, within our contract time and within our budget. We are moving ahead. As the manager mentioned, we did get more competitive pricing when we went back out for the track. So that project is gearing up to go. We are going to wait until, obviously, the high school's, I guess, official spring schedule is complete roughly in mid-June. We anticipate it will be about a 30-day-ish project to get to substantial completion. So we're very confident that the stadium will be ready to go for users later in the summer and in the fall for the high school. Regarding the larger conversation, you know, with the entire complex, we've been in close communication with Lowell High Athletics, the athletic director, Dave Lisinski, to understand what the sort of wish list, I guess, is from Lowell High, if they had the ability, you know, and if money was no object, what kind of changes would they like to see at the site. And we've tried as much as possible to include a lot of those things within the larger vision. As Camilo said, we'll try to address those. As funding availability comes up, we do have the ability to access state grants for some of this work and are able to, you know, address things in that way, once we have a, an idea of the order and the priority list of where the grandstand is. So, you know, we wanted to address that first, but also take into account this larger vision and how it matches up with what Lowell High Athletics has in mind for, for their students.
And that's it. That was the presentation, basically, again, a whole vision of what the future for Colley could be, and that can help us address how do we execute these things and how do we allocate funding as it becomes available. Thank you.
Any questions right now? Yeah, Counsel Rourke?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, yeah, just a comment. I think there were certain things with, with Colley Stadium and the grounds that, you know, there was no discussion on it. This had to be repaired, had to be fixed, or there'd be no sports season this year, right? And, you know, kudos to the manager and DPD, you know, even back when Diane Tratt was here, you know, Giovanni, I know, has worked very hard on it, to, to get this repaired and fixed ASAP. And it wasn't just a simple repair. As people see, it's a beautiful field out there right now. That's going to be, you know, there for a long, long time. There's a maintenance plan in place already, and, you know, there's, the city bought it equipment to plow the field, you know, when snow's involved. So, you know, the maintenance that goes along with the brand-new field is there. The track's going in in a couple of weeks as well. So that, you know, and the grandstands that the manager spoke about earlier, you know, that causes leaks and that's a danger. You know, the things that had to be done, you know, the manager has really stepped up with her team and got those things done in a very, you know, quicker-than-timely manner, right? You know, the wish list things that are involved, you know, I think can be done, I know that can be done through outreach, you know, through partnerships. And I think we'll learn more about that in a couple of minutes. But, you know, the idea with having, you know, the new school being taken care of downtown, and with this being done over at the Colley complex, really is going to make, you know, the city of Lowell, the education system, the extracurricular activities that's going to go about in regards to the school system, to really be top-notch in this state, you know, whether it be public or private schools. And I think that was the manager's goal going into this. I think that that's been achieved through this plan. You know, it may take a little bit of time, but, you know, like most things that, in the city that, when the city sets their mind to, with the public and the private partnerships, it does get done. You know, you saw a version of that just, you know, a half hour ago. And I expect this project, you know, to live up to all expectations and to exceed it. So I'm very excited about it. I know others are as well. And, you know, just thank the manager and, and her administration for, for taking the time to get these things done. And I think it's going to be nothing but a positive for the city. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counsel Samaras?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, actually, too, I'd like to, you know, thank the manager and the planning department for listening to the staff at Lowell High School. I mean, all of us, you know, we selected the high school project, we selected the project high school to be built downtown. I think we're going to have the finest high school in the state. But at that time also, as we were discussing the building of the new, the new building, we talked about, you know, what should happen at Colley Stadium. There are many councils here that have made motions on the different fields and some of the conditions out at Colley. But if the thing, if we can put a project like this together, because the, I mean, I think the planning department did some outstanding work as we looked at what potentially could happen out at Colley Stadium. I think this could be the capstone of the rebuilding of Lowell High School. You know, as the former headmaster, and sometimes people say, you know, you're always bringing up the issue of being the former headmaster, best job in the city of Lowell. But I did know one thing, that the coaches do need certain things. And over the years, they've talked about a field house. I think a field house was discussed many times during my tenure as headmaster of Lowell High School, but the city couldn't see its way clear to do something like that. But we do need something. We can't have coaches, we'll say, running their programs out of the trunk of their car. And I have to commend Danny for talking about, you know, we have all of this action going on, but will we see it in our lifetime? What, what do we have to do? And Counsel Rourke talked about, you know, maybe we could help with getting some private funding for this type of project to help the city. Because the city was establishing what was needed, the high school staff was establishing what is needed. But the question is, what is needed and how do we fund it? It's two different situations. And we've got some people tonight that have put some time into thinking about, how can we help the city give us a type of program out at Colley Stadium that will not only meet the needs of the students, but meet the needs of the community? And this is a long time coming, but, you know, we needed, we needed to see something. We need to hold on to something. And I think the city manager and the planning department, by listening to the staff at Lowell High School, have come up with some great projects that we would like to be part of. I think as city councilors, we would like to finish off this high school project. But, you know, we necessarily do not have the funds. But perhaps with private funding and other, and grants and other ways of doing things, we'll be able to give the students at Lowell High School what they deserve, the best academic high school, and then a high school who's, will have the ability to give some of the greatest activities in the state. So that's where I'm at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Counsel Elliott?
No, we have some individuals from the foundation. Are they going to speak?
Yeah, if we're all set, someone want to come up?
The green button's on.
It's on, okay. Madam Manager, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Matthew Lulasher. I am the chairman of the Lowell Athletics and Activities Foundation. This group was formed for the reasons that have been discussed here tonight. It's understood by everyone that what was just put before you is a big ask. It's a big vision. And it's something that I want to commend the manager and the DPD staff for helping put together, for Counsel Samaras and Rourke for giving the impetus to start the project here, and for all of you who I know have been committed over the years through different motions and different actions over the time that you've been here, to the children of Lowell, the students of Lowell High School in every way throughout these years. We have a tradition in this city that when we need to get something done, we don't just look to City Hall. We do it together. We do it in cases where we had to build the park, the arena, when we were looking to work with the Coalition for a Better Acre for any number of projects that we've had to go through. The Lowell Plan, when we redeveloped Julian Steele out of the Lowell Plan, that's in conjunction with another organization. We have a long history of doing this, when we put a vision before us and work towards that goal collectively. And as I say, the manager and her staff has put before us the opportunity for the organization to act in the way that Project Learn, another good example, is working in conjunction with the school department, to provide additional opportunity here in the city that's different from anywhere else. And we are different. We have different challenges. But we also are in a time right now where equity, inclusion, the things we've talked about many times, what's a better way for us to turn to all of our residents and say, we are going to provide not only a first-class educational opportunity, we're going to provide a first-class activities and arts? And hopefully, the grand goal in this process, and what is without question the most expensive piece of the process, is the field house. And the manager has mentioned, the city has many needs, many things that they have to make sure that we can provide. And as you know, as you look at the budget, as budget season is soon to be here, this is a big ask. Well, this foundation and this group, and I just want to quickly mention the, the members if I could, and then allow for, for any others to speak. But as I say, my, I am the chairman of the board, but I want to recognize Brian Chapman, who is also on the board and is the vice chair, Noel Kriegen, who's the treasurer, Marisol Norriga, who is the secretary, Caroline Zachara, who is doing all of our work with our social media web and all of the other development, which you will all be seeing very soon, hopefully, and Christopher Dick, who's... who I think is going to speak as well in a moment. A group of Lowell residents coming together to try to make Lowell better is literally what we talk about in the prayer as we start. That is, it struck me as we were going through that process, that we pray for these types of opportunities. Well, we think we have one, and we all have to work together. We know there's work to be done, the foundation is here to act in that supportive role, to try to raise the type of money and bring this forward in a way that we can do, hopefully, in conjunction with the grants and the other things that can be placed before you as the elected body to try to move this forward. So, I will cede some time, hopefully, here to Christopher Dick, and then here for any questions as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Madam Manager, City Council. I mean, how do you follow that up? I mean, I'm usually not for a loss of words, but that's, you just, you summarized it perfectly, right? This could be, like you said, Council Samaras, the capstone of the high school project. We're truly excited to be a part of it. It's a collaboration, we love to cobble something together and get this thing done. It's a big ask, it's a long road. This committee has shown nothing but commitment to get this thing going. So, we're truly proud to be a part of this, we all have a lot of history in this, in this city, and we love to see Colley where it can be. So, I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, Council Elliot? Yep, yep.
I guess I'm being put on the spot by Council Elliot. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for listening to us and for having us today. As a member of the Lowell Police Department, who serves the residents of Lowell and also a resident myself, when I heard about this project, I was really, really excited myself with the others, and I was eager to be on the board, and I'm excited to do my part to bring something really good for the residents and the kids, and I'm just excited to be someone that serves the city, lives in the city, and is part of this project. So, thank you.
Caroline, you have to speak now. Come on.
One over.
And don't tell the story about how I painted your room when you came home from the hospital.
I'm no longer a resident of the city of Lowell, I live in Maine now, but I think it speaks to this project and how important I think it is that I drove down for this today, and I'm very excited to play a part in helping bring the facilities that the students of Lowell High, that the kids of Lowell really deserve. I see the facilities in the town that I live in, and they're state-of-the-art. To bring something like that here to my hometown would be amazing.
Thank you.
Just in culmination, the one last thing I would say is, if you look down the street and go not too far down the street, we have the senior center, and that is kind of our community area for the individuals in this city that are seniors. I'm not gonna look around, 'cause I'll get myself in trouble. But the goal here, the goal here is for the fieldhouse to be looked at as the youth center. For us to develop this as the youth center for what we do here for our students and as, as individuals who have been involved, like Council Elliot and the soccer program, and Council Drinkwater, now I know, doing baseball, and others, Council Rourke, who's done PYO baseball. If we could have a centralized location where all those activities and all those things can be planned, discussed, and worked through, we put ourselves in a much better place, and I think it can be a wonderful, wonderful add to the city, and hopefully, that's what we endeavor to do. So, I thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Council Rourke?
Just quickly, I know, just, you know, the talk sounds really good, it was really dumb, but just to prove that it's not our talk, I'm sure Matt or Chris can speak about, you know, we already got a sizable donation to the, to the, to the group, and also there's plans going forward, if I remember correctly, for the locker room project. Madam, is that correct? Madam Manager?
Yes, that's my understanding, that there's been money already, that the group has already been able to raise.
Yeah. I'm excited to announce that we have actually already raised over six figures into the foundation. We have had multiple donations into the foundation at this point, a lot of interest from other individuals who have expressed helping in this way. The locker room project, which we will do in conjunction when we get the go-ahead from the city, we would make the donation, appears to be close to fully funded at this point. And so, as we phase through this process, our goal is to look to, with the guidance from the city, for when the timing and the process is correct, for us to try to raise the dollars as we move through the different phases, all the while understanding that we have the opportunity to raise a substantial amount for that fieldhouse, and that's the crown jewel, and I think we all wanna look back and say we pulled that off, 'cause that, that would really be an amazing process. But we are, like I say, over six figures already raised now, and we became an organization two weeks ago. So, hopefully, hopefully, we will continue that process. And it is Lowell Athletics and Activities Foundation and L A A F dot org, we'll put the stuff out. Lowell A A F, excuse me. See, thanks, that's why Caroline's here, see? But yeah, we have raised money already, and hopefully, we'll move the process. We plan, as Chris had just mentioned, there is a golf tournament already planned for the end of August to continue to raise money, and as I say, so many of the business leaders and individuals that care, graduates of Lowell High School, individuals that have family with ties back to the city, have already started to reach out about what this could mean and what this could look like. So, hopefully, we can get this done. So, thanks.
Thank you. Council Samaras?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanna thank you for the presentation. The one thing, you know, some of us have been asking a few people in the city, you know, could you support something like this? Because the one thing, as we stated before, the city can't do it alone, and we've been very successful with public-private partnerships, and I haven't heard anybody say, no, we can't do it. But they have to be commended for their action. If you see this group here, they're not the traditional people who have been part of a lot of the fundraising. This is the new Lowell, that's the way I look at it. We've, there's been a lot of talk over the years of bringing in other people, because I could mention, any one of us could mention at least a dozen people who've been constantly involved in helping the city through fundraising. But the thing is, this is a new group of people, young people who have been involved before, but this is now a serious action on their part, a serious commitment, and it's nice to know for all of us that Lowell has a future, and that's the way I look at this organization, part of the future of the city, new blood coming in to do good things for everybody. This council has worked hard, I mean, and I think all of us do appreciate this kind of an effort, because as I stated before, literally, everybody here on this floor has made some kind of motion to do something at the high school to give it a better place. And as I said, while I was headmaster, every, the, whether, we're talking some of the senior members, not, veteran members, we'll say, of the city council, Reader, Rodney, the issue of working to make Lowell High School a better place, and that's what's important to all of us. And so, I'm just pleased to be share part of this with all of you, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in. Thank you. All right, so back to the agenda. City Clerk, minutes of the Economic Downtown Development Subcommittee, March 22nd, and April 13th, Arts and Culture Subcommittee, April 13th, City Council Regular Meeting, April 13th, City Council Special Meeting, Auditor Interviews, April 20th. Need a motion to accept place on fire by Council Elliot, seconded by Council Drinkwater. All those in favor? Four unfinished business. Motions, Council Samaras, four one, request city manager have proper department access the condition of the city parking kiosks and prepare plan for proper maintenance. Seconded by Council Noon, Council Samaras?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Several people did come forward to me to talk about this, especially along Middlesex Street, not Middlesex Street, I'm sorry, yes, Middlesex Street, in that area where Mill Five is. And the talk was that if you wanted to go somewhere, especially in that area, you would have to go to maybe three or four or five kiosks to find one that was working. I talked to one individual who was on the Middlesex Street, and he went to four kiosks, decided, look, I've only got 20 minutes to do such-and-such, went and did his business, said it took him 15 minutes, came back, had a ticket on his car. I mean, he wanted to put money in the meter and what have you, but I think many of us have been part of this, and these kiosks are such where they can easily break down, but I think we have to come up with something, just a better way of monitoring these, this type of machinery, and to ensure that they work properly, because nothing is more frustrating to people who wanna put their money into the meter, but do what they have to do. But if it's a challenge, and they have to go to two or three other kiosks to find one that works, you're gonna chase people from coming in downtown. So, I realize that things like this cost money, but I think this is an area where some funds have to be spent to ensure that when people come in the downtown, they're able to operate properly, pay their, pay their meter, do their work, and go home. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is an important, one of the important motion, I guess, because of the judicial center, where you have all the court there, and event, soon enough, all the court will be open to public, and that's a corridor that people is gonna look for parking, before the parking that, you know, that Salapoli is going to build, Lot One, and other parking. So, it shouldn't be that difficult to really check that out as you do parking enforcement, take note of, you know, a meter that's not working, notify those at the headquarters, and try to fix as soon as possible. The inconvenience really not good. I mean, really, I mean, if I first come to the city, and then the first things, you know, have business in the courthouse, I may not come back the next time because of the inconvenient, you know, so I think we need to take care of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on this? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Council, second, four two, Council Drinkwater, request city manager provide an update on the municipal vulnerability preparedness plan and the feasibility of submitting a proposal for the current roundabout of municipal vulnerability preparedness action grants to help city of Lowell become more climate resilient through the climate change adaptation of projects.
Second.
Seconded by Council Noon. Council Drinkwater, that's a mouthful.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I put all those words in there just to try to trip you up, so, but thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know that last year, the city was awarded a planning grant to create a municipal vulnerability preparedness plan to look at projects, to make sure we're prepared for the impacts of climate change and the impacts it might have on the city. Through that process, I know we were eligible for a grant that was awarded early this year, or may have been in the fall, to look at the Clay Pit Brook Climate Resilience Stormwater Management Capital Improvement Plan. So, we got some money in to take a look at that. I happened to see that we're in another round of municipal vulnerability preparedness grants, and just, that'll be an opportune time. I'm not actually sure if the overall plan was finalized, or if that's still being worked on, and also to see if there might be an opportunity to apply for some funding through the current round of action grants. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments on this? Madam Manager?
Just briefly, we will get you a report, Counselor. The, we, there is a second round, you know, right now, and it's actually, the applications are due May 7th by 2:00 PM before our next meeting, and so, we're preparing it, they're working very hard on this next round of application. I'm told today that they fully expect to make the deadline. I won't say without struggle, but they fully expect to make the deadline, but we'll have the full report for you, including the, including the application for the next meeting.
That's great news. Thank you.
Thank you. Good motion. Far three, Council Chow, requests manager notify Lowell delegation regarding the supporting of city council for S D 1323 and H D 1986, raising the penalty for shooting into a dwelling from misdemeanor to a felony, and urging their success in becoming law, seconded by Council Mercy. Council Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The motion is straightforward, but I do wanna make a couple comments on that. Last, last summer, the beginning of August, in two weeks' timeframe, there were two, there were four shootings, two on my street and two was a couple blocks away from my house. And two of those four shootings, the bullet went into a residential dwelling. I did not know which room it hit that house. In another, another shooting, it hit a residential house in the living room, and in that evening, there were people in the living room, but they were on the, they were on the floor, socializing, so the bullet went through the walls and hit the couches. Thankfully, nobody was, were on the couch to be hit. I just wanna read the statistics, and I thank Chief Richardson for sending me this statistic. In 2020, there were 137 entries for gunshot. Fifty-four of those calls were verified as shots fired. I don't need to read the whole of the statistic, but I just wanna say, out of those 54 incidents that were verified gunshot, 31, I'm sorry, 28% were fired into the air, 28%, and 22% hit a residence or building. So, roughly, there were half the shot that people just shot into the air, maybe for fun or the scare of other people, and the other half hit a dwelling. Now, the, the, the docket at the State House, one's a Senate docket, one is a House docket, and this bill was introduced originally by Radi Mom, and I know that our city manager, when she was the state senator, also supported this bill, and now also Senator Ed Kennedy also adopted this bill. They support this bill, but for some reason, for a few years now, it has not been passed into law yet. They do a great job, so I think we, as a council body, we want to send our support to them, that we stand behind them and urge them and encourage them to push this bill forward to become law. They're doing a great job, and this is just to show our support as a council body from Lowell to them. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Council Chow, four point four, request city manager contact Mass DOT regarding remedial actions needed to enhance the safety at all at the end of the Lowell connector at Gorm Street, seconded by Council Noon. Council Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, this motion is very similar to Council Samaras' motion, the prior, prior meeting, but I didn't get a chance to speak on it. It's pretty much asking for a report as well from a DOT, but I know that Mass DOT planned to do something in that area, but that might take a long time. I don't know if Madam Manager, in a short time, if we could get a remedial solution from the state. I don't know what it's called, but on the road sometimes, when the tire hits some, some grace area, it makes a noise, it wakes up drivers. If they could put that maybe as a short-term solution, because I know much, many of the accidents and cause death usually happen at night, and I don't know if the driver's not aware of that the road is coming to an end or what have you, but I think that would alert them to really pay attention if something that screeched their tires or grazed their tires to wake them up. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Last old motion of the night by myself, request city manager send a letter to the Hanford, requesting that they keep their Rogers Street Pharmacy Department open and operating, seconded by Council Noon. Motion, speech for itself, just trying to get support to keep that pharmacy open in that section of the city, just to give people options so they don't have to go to one pharmacy, basically, one big-name pharmacy, so. Any questions? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Communications from the manager. Motion response, A, Firehouse Department Company closings. Council Rourke, Council Mercy, any questions? Council Mercy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a comment, and I wanna thank the city manager tremendously. In a perfect world... In a perfect world, there would be no fire company closings, but the fact remains that it's a question of money, it's a question of staff, many factors play into this, but you have done a tremendous job in negotiating to try to get at least a, a reduction in the closures. So to say that they're going to have just one company per 24-hour, that's quite a goal and, and that's attainable. And I know a lot of work went into making that happen. I want to congratulate you because you could have done nothing, but you didn't. You did something and I'm sure the fire department and the chief very happy about that. And I know I spoke to some firefighters earlier today and they're very pleased. So I know that along with that, I had made a comment about if we ever could discuss or agree that in the winter specifically, when people are in the house more and people are putting on other means of heating the property, like space heaters or whatever, things that are probably not even legal here, but they do it anyway in an effort to keep warm. So there's a higher risk of a chance of a fire. So in the months of the winter, if we could not go without firefighters, fire station company closings in the poorer sections of the city where the, it's very dense, buildings are on top of each other, and I think that would be so much better if that could be, if you could understand what I'm saying, I think that would be very helpful, too. Thank you.
Counselor Rourke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, to reiterate some of Counselor Mercia's points, you know, thank you for the work that was done. You know, the bottom line is that the city's safer, right, when, when less firehouses are closed and, you know, the idea of keeping them open at, at night, overnight, when people are home, it's Counselor Mercia's point, is again, it, it makes the city safer. So thanks, everybody involved and, and to fixing the problem. Thank you.
Counselor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a good strategy and I'm glad that Madam Managers have discussion with the fire, with the union are talking about it. It's important, it's a good strategy for public safeties and, you know, having just one company closing, you know, per shift, you know. And, and I know that it's, you know, at some point, sometime it may not be realistic because you never know, right? You know, staff get sick, call in, and they may have to close. But please do everything you can to limit it into, like say, you know, per year, if you have 350 company closing per year, that's a good thing. That's a good benchmark to work toward because, you know, right now, I'm sure we have way too many. And maybe because of the, because of the COVID, because of the staff quarantine, come in contact with people, because of many things, including the academy closing. So that is one component of it. The other component of it, if I may urge, that we're going to go back to new normal soon. Having a fire safety education, fire prevention education is also important for all residents, either, there's many ways we can do that these day, a public meeting or through Zoom or through however you can do it, we, we do that. The other things I think, too, is that, yes, it's good to have just one company closing per shift, but we also have to look at, you know, in a, going forward, our capital plans to make sure that we have truck, engine, all those, that is essential for firefighter to do their job and to do their job well. I know that, you know, I know that a couple of years ago, I believe, in a capital plan, you, Madam Manager, put into a, a capital plan for Stevens Street, right, engine. And it take a while, it's not here yet, right? So it probably take, the Stevens Street, the truck, I mean, the truck. Yeah, I mean, it's not here yet, right? So, so it take, it take a while before that get built and so on. So, so those are some of the things that's important, not only that the, a company closing, one company closing per shift, fire prevention education, but also tool and, and equipment, truck and engine, you know, because those, those stuff I know is expensive, but it's important in term of helping us save life. Thank you, Madam Manager.
Thank you. Counselor Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And through you, Madam Manager, I was glad to see that in this report, it, it did mention that there will be a, an increased funding amount to the, the overtime budget, which I feel is needed. I did just want to ask a question for, for clarity's sake, because in the response, it mentions that there will be a maximum of one closing per 24-hour period. So when we're talking about a maximum one, that, of one, that's potentially, you know, on some days that may be zero, on some days that may be one. If we're talking about an average of one, you know, it, it's putting us around, you know, up to 365 closings per year. Granted, most of those would be during the day shift. But I, I think that, I would say at the end of the, the fiscal year, I think if we're, you know, upwards of, of 300 to 360 closings, that puts us right around the, the average of, of where we had been, I think, leading, leading into this year. I know it was, it had gone as high as 672 in FY '16, it had gone as low as 266 in FY ' '17. And we've given a lot of attention to this issue. My hope would be that we're on a pathway, and I would, I would hope that pathway could start next year, but to lowering that trend to, to below the recent historical low at least of 266. So I don't know if it's possible to just maybe get some clarity from you, Madam Manager, if, if the, the plan is really to, to have one a day or if the plan is to maybe have, you know, no more than one a day, but hopefully, you know, a, a few a week so we can kind of get that number to, to where we're trending below the historical lows.
Madam Manager?
Thank you. Let me just answer by saying, I want to give credit to the CFO, Connor Baldwin, Deputy Allison Chambers, the executive board, the chief, but the executive board of the union and, and they have their own financial people at the table with us looking at these. The plan, based on looking at all of the numbers, was to not exceed, and, and that's in, without getting too far afield, that seems to be the most doable and sensible thing to agree to. There's a number of other factors that come into this and so it was something that financially everybody was comfortable with and also as a practical matter. But it, but it's more than just one strategy, the other is adding more firefighters. That's key because the more firefighters we have on, the less we are looking, you know, to, to overtime. And so putting, I believe we're eight in the academy and then we're also pursuing the safer grant to put on another eight, I believe, by year-end. So, so that's part of the strategy, too. It's not just one, one thing. So, so I, I realize that's not an exact answer, but it was something after much, much analysis, many meetings, and, and Mr. Baldwin can, can attest to that. In addition to our big group meetings, I know Mr. Baldwin met with the financial side of the fire department to come to numbers and everything that everybody could understand. And, and as I said, scheduling isn't only money. It is money, but it isn't only money. There are other issues and so vacations and sick time and things like that all have to be factored in. So we're trying to address all of those issues that have been pretty much, you know, a, a challenge for the chief in his scheduling. I don't know if, if you have anything more to add on that?
Thank you, Madam Manager. I would only add that for the sake of clarity, it is our goal to maintain a policy of a maximum of one company closing per 24-hour shift. And that is with a preference for the day shift. So if a company has to close within a 24-hour period, it would be the day shift that, that is closed. However, you know, in a perfect world, all companies would be open during each day. But during times of scheduling issues or if, if there is a constraint on the chief or, or the person doing the scheduling, one is the maximum.
Can I just follow up on that? So, so the policy would be that the, the maximum would be one, one shift? Because I think it reads that as one company per 24 hours, but is the, the policy goal to have that be for only one shift within 24 hours?
The day shift.
Okay. So, so the policy would be to have the max of one closure per day occur during the day shift? Okay. And so, just one more follow-up, because I'm glad you mentioned the, the overall staffing of, of the department. And I know we will be getting the, the budget document soon and, you know, it'll have the, the staffing levels in there, but we'd also address the, you know, trying to get up to the... Apologize, it's back. Is there, can you kind of give us a preview of the budget, whether there's a plan to actually get up, you know, through an academy class or two to the, the same budget, budget as staffing level that we've had in, in previous years?
Mr. Baldwin?
Well, not to, not to spoil the, the surprise of the budget, but it is our intent to bring a budget that funds the 213, full complement of firefighters in the fire department, plus the additional amount for overtime that's alluded to in the motion response, as well as a request that we received from, from the union for a grant writer in the fire department to help further the grant funding for overtime and other grants in the fire department.
Thank you.
Madam Manager?
Thank you. I just wanted to add, and obviously, you know, the FY 2022 budget is subject to approval of the council, including any, any of our, our proposals, but, you know, we, we do plan on fully supporting 213. And I do want to give credit to the, the union and they made a persuasive argument. So again, we don't usually preview what's going to be in the budget before we've even finalized it, but they did convince us and, and they had really good arguments that it is worthwhile to have, for them to have a grant writer for just the fire department. And, and they cited, cited some good examples. So it wasn't all about overtime. We had, we had a lot of back and forth and, and good give and take on, on, you know, just input from them on, on the fire department. And I will say, they also had some interesting requests, and I'm with them on this, that if the American Recovery Plan Act comes forward and we get some guidance from the federal government, what can be done with infrastructure? They put in a plug for fire stations. And I, as I said, I don't, I don't disagree with them on that.
And I would, thank you for making, I didn't want to get over my skis with the budget, but thank you for making a slight exception to, to give us a sneak preview.
Thank you. Counselor Chow and Counsel Elliot?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And also want to thank Madam Manager for this report and also CFO Connor Baldwin for the, for the financial aspect of it. Very, very ambitious plan. I, I don't know if to you, Mr. Mayor, to Madam Manager, if you can answer this question or if the chief is on to answer some, a couple of questions. I was just wondering if we can get information later, maybe through email, just to have a map, a location where the fires have been happening throughout the city, like a map location, different neighborhood, maybe for like a five-year, three-year, one-year report. And the reason for looking at that, at that numbers, you know, I, I want, I, I wonder just to see where the fires happened the most. And that has to do with rotation. How, how is the brownout rotation being determined? Is there like an, you know, a strategy for that? And just to revisit Counselor Mercia's point, is to look at areas what has high density. And just my common sense thinking, when you have a high-density area, when you have multi-units, multiple floors and so forth, I would think those are the areas that probably had more, more fires than other different neighborhoods. And hopefully, that type of determination will help determine the rotation throughout the city and of course, with focus on where the danger or the risk might be more at. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Elliot?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Spoiler alert, was good news. So, good job, Counsel Drinkwater. This, I, I think that's a great idea, quite frankly. I know that we, there was a work group, the prior council, regarding fire stations and the conditions of the infrastructure and, and engines and equipment, et cetera. So I, I think that makes all the sense in the world. I think it was Counsel Conway, actually, that made that motion, it was on the school committee, that eventually evolved into Project Lauren. And we see the success that that has brought from hiring a grant writer to finding funding and then it goes from there on after. But I, I appreciate the fact, the, the meetings that were taking place. Public safety is not something that we take lightly. We fund it, but this year has been extraordinarily complicated. And I, I appreciate the plan that was put together. We've seen seemingly some of the highest numbers of fires, very serious fires throughout the city. So not only for, from this year, moving forward, that there will be funding to cover shifts as a result of, I, I know months ago it was COVID. Regardless what the situation is, the plan is in place moving forward and to, so people know that there's adequate and sufficient public safety throughout the city. I know at the neighborhood meetings, it's a frequent topic of conversation, why is this station closed? Why is this company closed? So to the union, to the administration, coming up with a plan, not only for this year, but next year as well, is, is a breath of fresh air. And as the memo alluded to, doesn't impact the tax levy, doesn't, these, these moves, this, it's a balancing act, will not affect the, the tax rate or increase in, in the tax levy. So a lot of kudos and icona, but it's, it's not easy. It's, it's a lot of pain got to this point, but there's, there's, public safety is, is imperative and we hear it loud and clear. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments on this? Counselor Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I want to say, I don't know how you could put a price tag on saving a life. I don't know how you could squawk about that. And I know that a, a grant writer is very, very important. I know we have Mary Ann Balata Manzi in the fire, in the police department who does a tremendous job and has saved this city thousands and thousands of dollars. I remember many, many years ago, we had a firefighter. He wasn't a grant writer, but in his time at the station on Branch Street, he looked things up. He was like an investigator and he found ways to save money. He had all the windows in the fire station repaired through a grant. This guy paid for his own salary in the sense that he brought in thousands of dollars. He was just amazing. So I know how important a grant writer is and perhaps that'll save us as well. So even if we didn't have one, I, I can't put a price on saving a life, especially if that life is your family member. You know that. Here's the thing about the fire department, you, you don't give them a thought, you don't even see their worth until you've experienced a fire in your own home. Then you realize that when you're running out of a burning building and they're running in, those are the heroes. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion response B, short-term rentals. Counsel Elliot, any questions?
Oh, so this is a motion, short-term rentals for all the city. There is a chart regarding Airbnbs and can we forward this to the zoning subcommittee for further discussion? Yeah, okay. All right, Madam Manager, that, that makes some sense. I was going to make some comments, but I, I think it's important that we clarify transient home, tourist home. It's a concern that certainly is surfaced, so I'll make that in form of a motion. Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Elliot, seconded by Counsel Conway. Counsel Elliot, second by Counsel Conway. Any other comments on this? St. Louis School to reducing special education costs. Counsel Elliot, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just not, not questions, but a comment. This, just an idea to use a St. Louis school that I know, School Committee Men, Dakota and myself and, and other members have, have talked about relocating the special ed curriculum to a location in the city, and this, this was an op, is an option, or was an option, as a report indicates. The property at St. Louis, the old St. Louis School in Centerville is under agreement, and it's not an option anymore. So, it was a little disappointing, but I guess I was a day late and a dollar short. However, the report does indicate there are other parcels of property or other locations that the city is looking at. Madam Manager, I don't know what the next, next step is. I don't know if, if it's possible to send out an RFQ or an RFI for those locations that may and may not be available. I don't know, maybe, I'm sure your team has a plan, but considering we pay $260,000 in annual rent, just we don't get anything back from it, and it's in Chelmsford, I, I appreciate the report, but I hope, and I don't think that the issue is going to just be put on the shelf. I think it does move some, Madam, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Madam Man?
Yeah, thank you, and we will follow up on this. I, I did want to mention that, I think it was two, was either two or three years ago, but when, when the city was, again, considering Chelmsford, or whether it should be in, in Chelmsford, or stay in Chelmsford, DPD and, and Jim Green and others did go through the St. Louis site. And there was, there wasn't a formal study, but it was not in the shape that could have been suitable at the time. It wasn't handicap accessible, it didn't meet any of the requirements for the school, like the 80's school, that has very specific requirements. So, in the short term, between cost pro, you know, being cost prohibitive and, and not being suitable, it wasn't pursued at that point. And so, but, you're correct. I think the school department is desirous of finding another location. They may be outgrowing where they are, and so there's, we'll certainly work with the school department as far as, you know, what they're, what they see their future needs and what should be in an RFQ.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Two-for-two Lowell program. Counsel Elliot, any questions on that report?
I still, as we talked about zoning and homeownership, I, I still think I supported then, I support it now that we, in order to get two families, and if we look through across the city, and as we talk about affordable housing, I have to, I have to say, we should also take notice of some of the housing that we do have in the city, and particularly those that are absentee landlords. And I know it's, it's frustrating for the city and that we can't keep up with the code violations of these landlords that are getting extra, you know, we talk about rent burden and, you know, individuals that are in affordable housing, they're living in conditions that are, in some cases, deplorable. So, that's why I do think two, you know, homeownership, you buy a two-family, you live in one side, you rent the other out, gain some equity, and we need to compete with, and regrettably, when I'm a coworker that just bought a property in Centerville, you know, what's going on with real estate in the city, and I will say in the city, because I don't think it's, it's, it's as expensive in other communities, it's the investors that are outbidding first-time, possibly first-time homeowners on multifamily. And it's, something like this will offset the cost. I don't even know if we have a, I, I guess the bidding wars in the real estate market on two-family and multifamily are astronomical. So those, you know, those people that just got married looking for a two-family, for the reasons of, that we just talked about, because it can be affordable, they don't have a shot. They just don't have a shot. So, and then we see what happens, they buy them, they get their, they get their rent, and then they don't take care of them years later. So, that's a discussion for another time. I do think it's, it's a problem. This home, I understand it's a home problem, it's a loan, and that should they sell in five years, it's, they have to pay it back. So, thank you. Thank you for the report. I hope that we can do more with it, and we'll talk about this at greater length later, too.
Thank you. Motion Response Basketball Hoops for City Parks. Counsel Noon, any questions?
No, I just want to thank Madam Managers and her team, Christian Clancy, as well as Superintendent Park, Shannon Kohan for the report. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Manager, informational shared streets pilot program?
Thank you. The, as the council may recall, the, the city did get money for the shared streets program, and there were specific projects. One was the Cardinal O'Connell project, as well as the Pawtucket Boulevard, which is in the form of a pilot project. These, these funds are, need to be expended in the spring, and so, this is informational, just so the council is aware, these two projects will be happening, probably beginning in, in, in May. But the first one, the Cardinal O'Connell is to, one thing we've talked about a lot is the safety features and safety of crossing and so forth, in the vicinity of City Hall and Cardinal O'Connell Parkway. These are, there's, there's a much more in-depth and expensive fix, as we had heard in the past, but this is something that would improve safety, and this would be happening and be installed, as I said, next month. And Pawtucket Boulevard is, is also creating, the, the idea of this area of Pawtucket Boulevard is to try and calm the traffic out there. And again, it's a pilot project. I think Camillo is on the Zoom, if, if the council, he could, he could make the presentation if the council desires, and we just want to make sure that, you know, this was the shared street program that we were awarded the money for from the state, and that this is going to be implemented in the very near term. So if there are any questions, or if, if the council wants to see the presentation...
Any questions? We also have the presentation, it's in our packet?
It's in your packet, right.
Yeah.
But those are the two projects.
I make a motion to send this to the Transportation Subcommittee. I think there'd be a good discussion, these, particularly the Cardinal O'Connell Parkway and Merrimack Street. I mean, we've had many discussions here on the floor of, of the city council and the danger that it poses here, so no objection.
Motion to send it?
My only caveat is that we, we need to expend the monies.
Right.
Yeah, like, I think by the end of May, so. But we certainly can talk about it, and, and maybe talk about, you know, these are, these, this is, you know, a grant money that we're making changes. This wouldn't solve all of the, you know, the really bigger fix that we've talked about out there.
So do you, are you looking for vote, Madam Manager?
No.
It's just informational?
I just wanted the council to be aware when they see these things happening, why they're happening, and, you know, what they, what, what they are related to.
Okay. No, I don't have any expectations of changing. I, I think the plan looks, I think the plan looks very good, and it's going to provide much needy, much-needed safety and improvements in areas that are, are very dangerous now.
Yeah, and we'll continue to try and find more permanent, you know, solutions and, you know, that, that we've, we've looked at. It's just the funding.
I still think it'd be helpful, even if we do the Zoom for, for the neighborhood organizations that would like to tune in and, and see these improvements.
Yeah, that, no problem.
In downtown.
I know Camillo could make the presentation, explain it, and maybe that's the appropriate venue, so everybody knows what it is.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Rourke, then Counsel Mercy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I know it says start in the spring, and just looking at painted curb extensions or painted crosswalks, that's not just repainting, right? Like the design, or like something like to add some, some, I guess, some spice to the downtown, or some, because I know there was a motion filed a couple of years ago about, you know, painted crosswalks, actually, you know, or it's on, I think, Anover Street, you know, the Candy Cane Crosswalk that's there.
Right, right.
You know, is there, is there plans to get like an artist involved, or local artist involved to, to do downtown crosswalks, or, you know, curb extensions, things like that? Is that?
That's not part of this particular, Camillo, if you want to speak to that.
Sure. The, the curb extensions is basically just painting, and we're not really physically for now building any crosswalks, and it's part of the testing, it's part of the pilot, that hopefully this does become a permanent solution, but for now, what we started with is communicating with the community how safe or unsafe they feel using these intersections, and what we want to do is test them throughout the fall, up until maybe December, or even maybe a little before, weather pending, and then test or send the same survey, and test what the differences were. Did this, did this change the perception of safety? Did it change the, the actual safety numbers for the community? So that's, that's what the pilot is about, making sure that before we go into a permanent solution, we test this, if there's something that needs to be changed, to change it before going permanent. It's low-cost implementation strategies, it's all painting, some of, some are flex posts, planters. It's a very simple project, and it's already, we're already coordinated with the signage department on, in terms of the crosswalks themselves. It's something that they would do regardless, which is repainting the crossposts in downtown.
Yeah, and I'm just looking on the, you know, the image that was supplied on the report, right? And I, I would imagine that if you contacted the Downtown Neighborhood Association or spoke to some people in the downtown, I, I would bet they would welcome, you know, something a little different, right? I know that when the Anover Street Candy Cane was done, it stood out, and I think people slowed down on, on that part of the area because of it. And again, I know this was brought up a few years ago, and it's just, again, I, I only thought about it because of what I see here, the presentation, and, you know, maybe something to think about, that's all. Thank you.
Yeah, we, we can certainly explore that. I mean, there will be painting happening this season, you know, in the downtown, we did walk around to look at what's needed to be done, but, you know, this was, this was grant that the city got for the shared streets, and trying to just test out some things, and then, which would help inform what needs to be done long-term.
Thank you. Counsel Mercy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Some time ago, like a year and a half ago, I came into City Hall for a meeting. It was on a Tuesday, and I was confronted by a few employees in the city, and they asked me to make some sort of a motion to address the issues out front, because they feel like they're moving targets every time they cross the street. And if we can't protect the very people that are performing a service for the citizens in this city, then that's a tough thing. So when I saw this, this safe streets, and the first one that I see is right outside here, that's, does my heart good. And then we got to think of the people that are coming over here, crossing the street to support us by paying their taxes and keeping us moving in the city functioning. So, I don't know what they're going to do to improve it, but it is a very, very dangerous area. I don't need a study to know how dangerous that is, so I'm happy to see that that work is being done. I don't know what exactly further they're going to do, but anything is better than nothing, so that's what we need to do.
Counsel, the other, last week, Commissioner Clancy was coming into the building, and she was almost hit by a car.
Honest to God, they're speeding so fast.
She was in the middle of the crosswalk, and they don't stop.
That's right, and we got to do something, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on this? LTC Board, Madam Manager?
We, we did repost the, this is for the council's appointment. There are two resumes in the packet for the council's consideration.
Counsel Elliot?
Thank you. So I had, I was individual, I asked to have that reposted, not because of the candidate and her qualifications, just that she was a resident of Westford, and this is a city council appointment. I just felt that it was important to have a resident of, of the city on the, representing the LTC Board. So, I make a motion that we have the Law Department prepare the vote to appoint Suzy Chun to the LTC Board.
Second.
Thank you. Communication to appoint Mark...
Mr. Mayor, can I also just, I should, I should follow up. If, if it's, is it possible that there are some other appointments, other boards, other commissions in the city, that does not require an individual to be a resident? I know our regulatory boards do, and they should, but if there is, I'd make a motion that we ask if Ms. Stewart is interested in serving on another board. We're certainly looking for bright individuals willing to volunteer, and I just want to make it clear that it's, we'd welcome her.
Okay. So was that a motion that I couldn't, it was going in and out?
I, I include that as part of a motion.
Oh, include it as part, okay. Thank you. All right. Seven-three, communication to appoint Mark Payton, Election Commission. Any questions on that? Need a motion to adopt by Counsel Noon, second by Counsel Conway. Roll call. Counsel Smith?
Yes.
Counsel Chauvin?
Yes.
Counsel Conway?
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Elliot?
Yes.
Madam Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercy?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Counsel Rourke?
Yes.
Need a motion to bundle all the votes, one eight-one through eight-five by Counsel Rourke, second by Counsel Samaras. So, read the votes, permission to waive the full reading, vote to accept and expend $250,000, mass call three grant, vote to authorize city manager to execute license agreement, one sixty Merrimack Street, overhanging signs, vote to declare surplus and convey the Lipoli Companies LLC, vote loan Holbrook Bell to, the Bell to St. Patrick's Church, and eight-five, vote to transfer $20,000 DPD fund transportation infrastructure, walk in and around Lowell Connector. Need a motion to accept?
Move to accept.
By Counsel, who's that? Counsel Elliot, second by Counsel Drinkwater. Roll call. Counsel Samaras?
Yes.
Counsel Chauvin?
Yes.
Counsel Conway?
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Elliot?
Yes.
Madam Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercy?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Counsel Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Could I just please comment briefly and say thank you very much for the donation of the Bell on loan to St. Patrick's Church? Thank you very much. I, I appreciate it. I'm certainly sure Counselor Elliot appreciates it.
I appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nine, resolutions. Resolution affirming inclusion, respect, and justice for all notable Asian-Americans. With full reading, second reading by title of motion. Just reading it. Resolution affirming inclusion, respect, and justice for all notable Asian-Americans. Let's see, need a motion to adopt by Counsel Rourke, second by Counsel Samaras. Roll call. Counsel Samaras?
Yes.
Counsel Chauvin?
Yes.
Counsel Conway?
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Elliot?
Yes.
Madam Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercy?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Counsel Rourke?
Yes.
Any yeses? Reports, Neighborhood Subcommittee? Counsel Rourke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city, before the city council meeting at 5:30, we held a Neighborhood Subcommittee. The discussion was zoning for more housing in Lowell, the report that, from a, a motion that Counsel Noon and I had made, that contained suggestions on how we could possibly increase housing and make the housing that we currently have more affordable. Joining myself, Counsel Mercy, and Counsel Noon, was Counsel Chauvin, Counsel Drinkwater, Counsel Elliot, Counsel Samaras, and Counsel Conway. You know, the, the meeting was well-attended, now we had multiple speakers, and I would say the over, overwhelming majority of the speakers spoke about, you know, not the, the report as a whole, really didn't fly, but there are things that are worth of discussion that going forward... didn't fly, but there are things that are worth of discussion that going forward and that overwhelmingly more discussion is needed regardless of, of, of what's taken up, if anything's taken up in the future. This is the third Subcommittee Report just on this motion response. I respect there to be more going forward. But again, there was good conversation between the participants. Mr. Slagle gave a, a review of the report. And again, anything, if it does happen, has to go through the process of, of being posted, a public hearing and discussions. And, you know, I'm sure it'll be brought to different neighborhood associations. So there is nothing in the future, right now, scheduled to be taken up. And again, it was more of suggestions to be made for, for the, for the council to look at the availability of, to create more housing and to make the housing we have currently more affordable. Again, there were multiple councils that were in attendance. If they wish to say anything, more than welcome to. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. Motion to accept a report of progress by Counsel Rourke, seconded by Counsel Noon. Petitions. Eleven-one, claims property damage. One personal injury. Need a motion to refer to Law Department for a report and recommendation by Counsel Drinkwater, seconded by Counsel Noon. Eleven-two, miscellaneous Denise Moses requests installation of handicap parking sign in front of her 183 West Sixth Street. Motion to refer a traffic engineer for a report and prog- recommendation by Counsel Chau, seconded by Counsel Conway. National Grid requests installation of 975 feet of 12-inch plastic gas mail on Jackson, Marsden, Middlesex, South and Summer Streets.
Mr. Mayor, there's a person from National Grid here. If there's any questions for her, she'll be happy to take them. If not, you can refer it to a public hearing.
Any questions on this? Seeing none, we'll refer to a public hearing on May 11th, 2021, at 7:00 PM. Motion by, no, motion by Counsel Chau, seconded by Counsel Drinkwater. City Council motions. First motion, 12-1, Counsel Elliot requests city manager have Law Department prepare a vote to take, take by tax title abandoned property at 39 Jewett Street, seconded by Counsel Drinkwater. Counsel Elliot?
I know this has been a nuisance property, Madam Manager, and I believe I got an email from someone in your office or the administration regarding this piece of property. It's abandoned by the, the owner. There are back taxes due on it. But the neighborhood of Jewett Street, it's, it's deplorable. I mean, it's a place where people just go and throw their trash. I know part of it's owned by the Housing Authority, but I don't know what we can do. It's in housing court. It's in land court, is that correct? Which, you know, year after year, month after month, the people in that neighborhood have to tolerate all the trash and the debris that's dumped there. So I, I know it's a work in progress, but just thought I'd bring it forward. If there's anything else to add, fine, don't prepare a special report. Because we did get it, I believe it was from Building Commissioner, Mr. Slagle.
Chair, Madam Manager?
We, we will get a report. It is in the land court and the city did process through the tax title process, but now it's in land court, which has been delayed. I think there's some ownership issues, but the Law Department will get us a-
What's the next step, Madam Manager?
Yeah.
I mean, it's in court. Will they, will they-
The land court has been, I, I don't wanna, I mean, it's been slow, certainly during COVID, getting anything out of land court. But we'll, we'll inquire as to where it is in the process and what we can do to try and spring it along. Because, you know, it is, it certainly is a blight for the neighborhood. But, but the city has brought it to the land court. But we'll, we'll, we'll see if there's some way of trying to expedite things with-
And then will the city take on, if we get ownership, will we dispose of it? Or, I mean, what's-
Yeah, that, that's, that's my understanding.
Okay.
It would be the ordinary process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Manager, while we're, we're on property, I, I can wait two weeks to file a motion, but I go by it every week. Can you tell me how there's this, this piece of property, it's not on the agenda, so I'll, I'll file a motion. I'm talking about the piece of property on Broadway Street that, literally, it's on Broadway and Willie and the, the concrete foundation wall can't be more than two feet, two feet from sidewalk. I, I don't understand how they got a permit, but, sorry, I digress.
No, thank you.
I'll bring it up.
Second motion, all those in favor say aye. Second motion, Counsel Elliot requests city manager provide a report regarding the ability to put construction plans online for residents for review, seconded by Counsel Noon.
The motions speak for itself. I know if it's possible, Madam Manager, but, you know, residents, there was a, they'd like to be able to see plans online. And I know that there are sometimes scaled-down versions, but if that's possible, I think it would be helpful for people that would like to review plans. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye. 12-3, Counsel Rourke requests city manager contact Mass DOT to request cleaning of Center Islands and areas behind guardrails and fencing along BFW Highway from the Rourke Bridge to Bridge Street intersection, seconded by Counsel Chau. Counsel Rourke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is almost a rite of spring where the areas starting from the Rourke Bridge going up towards, you know, the Har Bridge and then even further towards the Bridge Street Bridge. In, in the middle, there actually, you know, you see branches of a tree, three or four different, you know, large bushes, again, miniature trees. And once they start, leaves start to grow, it really becomes a traffic problem, a sight problem from, from motorists going up and down. And then once you get past the Har Bridge, the university going down, there's a lot, the fence where people do walk, the, the branches come over the fence. So it's very difficult to walk on the opposite side from where the university is. The university property on BFW Highway is perfect. You know that, right? You know, you can see where it starts, you can see where it ends. But, but the other areas, again, from the Rourke Bridge going all the way up, could use a good cleaning. I did send an email to, to the Mass DOT and I requested that I go through the city manager's office to, to get it done. They said they are willing to have the manpower to do it and they're just waiting for, for your call. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion say aye. Thank you. City Council, executive session. We have the executive session regarding matter of litigation, namely the Hoot versus City Lowell. Public discussion which would have a detrimental effect on the city's position. In open session, now it's reason for a motion to enter an executive session. So need a motion to go into executive session by Counsel Samaras, seconded by Counsel Rourke. And then we will adjourn from executive session. Roll call. Counsel Samaras?
Yes.
Counsel Chau?
Yes.
Counsel Conway?
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Elliot?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercer?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Counsel Rourke?
Yes. We're just gonna be able to just get out of Zoom for now because everybody's here. We can go over to the mayor's reception room, go over to the mayor's reception room. I'll be able to close down the Zoom so LCC doesn't, they can, they can shut out from here and that'll be it. Thank you.